Evening. Pursuant to Governor Newsom's executive order N dash twenty-nine dash twenty, members of the Daily City Council and staff will participate in this meeting via teleconference. Members of the public are encouraged to watch the meeting via live stream. Uh, the city council meeting livestream at HTTPS. Uh, colon backslash backslash B I T dot L Y backslash Daily City. J U L. Jul- J U L twelve. And at this uh, uh, point, may we um, call the, the meeting to order? And everyone rise for the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you very much. Uh, Ms. uh, Intendencia, may we have a roll call, please?
Yes, Mayor. Um, Mr. Buena Ventura?
Present.
Dr. Dalz McBall?
Present.
Ms. Di Giovanni?
Present.
Mr. Sylvester?
Glenn Sylvester, present.
Ms. Manalo?
Present. Thank you very much. I'd like to, um, the first thing on our agenda is our presentation. It's proclaiming June twenty twenty-one as Immigrant Heritage Month. Um, and I will have, um, at this point, um, Stephen, if you could please read, uh, the proclamation?
Thank you, Mayor. Um, the proclamation is for Immigrant Heritage Month, June twenty twenty-one. And it says, whereas America is a nation of immigrants and the majority of us are here today because our ancestors believed in the promise of this nation. And whereas throughout American history, immigrants have greatly contributed to the cultural, social, and economic fabric of our country, state, and local communities. And whereas more than half of Daly City's population is foreign-born, and immigrants continue to be a critical part of our community. They are business owners, healthcare workers, friends, and neighbors. And whereas the city of Daly City has always celebrated and deeply valued our city's diversity as a strength and a key component of the resilience of our community. And whereas during the COVID nineteen pandemic, our essential workers, many of whom are immigrants, dedicated themselves to protecting the feuds, food security, health, and safety of our communities. These are the same immigrant families who were disproportionately impacted by the pandemic. And whereas immigrants continue to support businesses and create jobs in the city of Daly City and throughout the state of California, and act as a critical role in innovating and strengthening our economy. And whereas despite these countless contributions, the role of immigrants in building and enriching our nation has been often overlooked. And ignorance, racism, and xenophobia has fueled anti-immigrant sentiment to this day. And whereas immigrants have been tireless leaders in advancing rights and access to equal opportunity for all Americans. And therefore, we must continue our shared values of kindness, empathy, respect, and compassion, and be reminded that what unites us is far greater than what divides us. Now, therefore, Justin C. Manalo, Mayor, and members of the City Council do hereby proclaim June twenty twenty-one as Immigrant Heritage Month in Daly City, and encourage all residents of Daly City to join in learning about and celebrating the contributions immigrants have made to our community.
Thank you, Stephen, um, for reading that. You know, it was, um, so important to have this proclamation um, for immigrant heritage month, especially um, in our city of Daly City. It's extremely, um, important because of the diversity uh, that we hold as a city. And um, as mentioned, the contributions of immigrants um, to our local community and the nation as a whole. And this proclamation is, um, given to every single, um, immigrant um, that has, uh, come to, to Daly City, uh, moved to Daly City, work in Daly City, and is really, um, a, a tribute to, to everything, uh, they have done and given to the fabric uh, of our society. Um, and so, thank you very much. Now, moving on to the next agenda item at this time, um, the approval of the mid-minutes for the regular meeting of June twenty-eighth, twenty twenty-five.
Motion to approve the minutes?
Second.
I have a first and second. All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
Aye, thank you very much. Now, moving on to, um, our consent agenda. Um, at this time, um, I entertain a motion to, uh, approve the consent agenda.
Madam Mayor?
Uh, move to approve? Was that, was that, I heard a? Was, was someone moved to approve the?
Uh, I'm trying, yeah, I'd like to, uh, remove item number six and number ten.
Okay. Item number six and item number ten.
Please, thank you. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
And I request to, uh, pull item number two on the consent agenda, please.
So two, six, and ten? Okay, is there a motion to approve?
Unless there is any other items to be pulled, I make a motion that we approve the consent agenda except for the items two, six, and ten.
Second.
Okay, all in favor, say aye?
Aye.
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 Aye? So, item number two, um, amending traffic regulations to, one, remove accessible parking space in front of five oh five A Street, TSR twenty-one dot, uh, slash thirty, and two, install a twenty-five-feet-no-parking zone at the south end of Wellington Street. TSR twenty-one slash thirty-three. Are there, uh, questions, or is there, is there someone that will, um, provide more, um, uh, clarification or presentation in regards to this? Director Chu?
Yes, Mayor, if I may, uh, rather than go through the lengthy process of, um, reiterating the staff report, I only have a question, and that's based on, um, whether, uh, removing the disabled person, uh, the disabled zone would be applicable, uh, because there may be other folks in the area, although they may not have come forward, that may need access to that zone. So, uh, basically, I just want a clarification on that.
Uh, yes, uh, thank you, um, uh, Councilmember Sylvester. Um, the staff is requesting the removal of the blue zone uh, based on the fact that it was initially requested from an individual um, that lived at the unit, um, at, at that location. And so, the person, uh, no longer lives there. They reached out to us to say it's, um, not needed, uh, any further for, for their use. Uh, we have not heard from any other, uh, folks in the area that requested a blue zone. Um, anyone that requests a blue zone has the ability to request it, and that's something that will be reviewed at the Traffic Safety Committee, um, and a recommendation made at that time. Um, but this was originally approved for that specific individual based on the conditions at that time.
Okay, um, thank you, Mr. Chu. I, I'm just wondering about other, uh, constituents in Daly City coming before the review board, and they can request, uh, a blue zone. So, given the information that you provided, and there has been no other request at this time, unless there are any questions from my colleagues, I've moved that we approve item number two.
There is a first, uh, there's a motion on the floor. Is there a second?
A second?
I have a, a second. Um, at this time, um, all in favor, say aye?
Aye. Aye.
Aye, thank you very much. Moving on to item number six, accepting and appropriating a two-thousand-dollar grant from the state of California.
Hi, Shayla.
Hi, good evening. Um, I'm very pleased to report that, um, the library has received another grant from the California State Library. This is a two-thousand-dollar grant that's part of the Lunch at the Library program. And the library would use this, these funds to support, uh, youth programs, specifically summer youth programs, at, um, partner meal sites. So, we have, um, some wonderful Big Lift inspiring summer camps going on at Susan B. Anthony and Thomas Edison's schools. And so, we would be using these funds to help enhance those programs for, for the young people in our community. I'm happy to answer any questions.
Thank you so much for that. Um, and, uh, are there any questions, um, from my, uh, colleagues at this time?
Um, yes, uh, Mayor, may I? I just want to say that, that two-thousand dollars for a lot of people don't realize, it stretches pretty far when you guys are really budgeting and, and making sure that these kids get, um, children get what they want. So, added to that, just like anything else, every little bit counts, and it's not a little bit. It's, it's exciting because the last few meetings, um, we've been able to do this. It's nice to see you, and then every time we see you, it's always something happy. So, thank you very much, and thank everyone, the staff, and, and everybody, uh, that's doing so much for the, now that the libraries are open, please thank them, and the community is very happy. And then, we have more to do, and, uh, more expansion, so that's gonna be fun. So, thank you, Shayla, and, and, um, thank you, Mayor.
Thank you very much. Uh, at this time, if there's no other questions, and entertain a motion for this item.
Um, motion to, motion for item number six?
I'll second.
All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, thank you very much.
You?
Now, moving on to item number ten?
Yes, Mayor?
Item number ten, one moment. I, item number ten, dedicate park bench at Geller Park. Um, uh, this is dedicating a park bench at Geller Park in honor of Supervisor David Canapa. One moment, I'm reading.
No, I have to recuse myself before you start the item, please.
I, I, I'm, one moment, I'm re-
Yeah, I cannot be around.
We're not, uh, we are not at a vote at the moment.
It doesn't matter. I cannot be here. I cannot be, excuse me, Mayor, when you recuse, you leave the room on the item, even before it's read. So, I mean.
Councilmember DG Ivani, you pulled the item.
Use myself. That's proper procedure.
You pull, you pulled the item.
Yes, I did. To, to, to recuse myself, and you need to give me, uh, the floor to give me the item, to recuse myself, so I can leave the room, and I cannot even hear this item when you recuse yourself. That is proper to, for me to do that. So, I appreciate it.
Giovanni.
Ms. Shaw, Ms. Kelly, let's ask the, the attorney.
Oh, no, I'm asking you to leave, leave the Zoom. You want to recuse yourself, so please leave the Zoom.
Let me recuse myself properly first, if you don't mind. I'm recusing myself because I have received campaign monetary donations and endorsement, uh, from Mr. Canapa, and especially this being public funds. Now, I will recuse myself in the room, um, after the item, I will return. I run it for public transparency. Thank you very much, and, uh, that's proper decorum. Thank you.
Mayor, I would make a motion to, uh, approve the item.
Thank you, uh, Councilmember, uh, Vida Ventura for that, and I will second, uh, this item. Um, and at this time, uh, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Um, is there any, uh, room for comments at this time? Mayor, is there a, uh, room for comment prior to the vote?
Prior to the vote, you'd like to make some comments, I think. Uh, did you vote already, or I'm, I'm trying to?
No, I have not.
Okay, I think we, we voted on the item, but if you'd like to make a comment, um, so at this point, there's three votes on the floor, but if you'd like to make a comment at this point, go ahead. I think, I mean, is it a roll call vote that we have? For this item, Kelly, is it roll?
We, we don't need a roll call, but, um, the Councilmember Sylvester may speak on it prior to his vote, aye or nay, either way. He can, he can have the floor.
Go ahead, Councilmember Sylvester, um, prior to your vote.
Thank you, uh, Mayor. Um, just wanted to advise that, uh, Daly City is, uh, a city that recognizes the contributions of, um, different people within the community to include citizens, other elected officials, and, uh, and that's what makes Daly City such a, uh, great city. I think in this particular case, to which, uh, Supervisor Canapa, not only is he a part of Daly City, but has also provided service in the past to the city as a councilman person, a mayor, and at the same time represents, uh, Daly City on the Board of Supervisors, uh, as District Five. So, I believe that this was a, uh, a good idea, a novel idea. And with that being said, I'd like to move forward and, uh, provide a vote in the affirmative for this action. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Sylvester, and, um, and that, I think, uh, the motion passes. And so, um, the premise of having, uh, this, uh, park bench dedication for Supervisor Canapa is really around his service to the community and being able to, uh, be there for the community, as mentioned, uh, when he was on council and as his seat as a supervisor. Um, you know, he has contributed to the Daly City community, um, and it is, um, in, uh, deep appreciation for his support, his leadership, and his partnership. Thank you very much. We are now moving on to public hearings, public hearings. Um, first, before we move on, uh, is Councilmember DG Ivani, uh, can she enter before we move into item number eleven?
Thank you. Thank you, Mayor, and thank you, Stephen, for coming to get me. Thank you, Mayor.
All right, now we are on public hearing, item number eleven, amend and restate the city statewide community infrastructure program. SCIP resolution.
Uh, good evening, Honorable Mayor, members of the City Council. Uh, this evening, the council will be, uh, conducting a public hearing to consider an amended and restated resolution making findings and authorizing matters necessary for the city to confirm its participation in the statewide community infrastructure program. The city joined the statewide community infrastructure program last year, and it is now before the City Council to consider modifications to the original skip resolution, which was adopted January twenty-seven, uh, two thousand twenty. These modifications will allow for the financing of fees and facilities to the formation of community facility districts in addition to the current assess- assessment district program. James Hamel, Managing Director from the California Statewide Communities Development Authority, is here this evening, and he will be providing a brief presentation on the program. So, it's a pleasure of the council. I'll turn it over to James Hamel.
All right, thank you, uh, good evening, Mayor, members of council. My name is James Hamel, um, here to do a brief presentation to you. Um, let me show my screen real quick. And I just have, uh, four quick slides to share with you, uh, this evening. Um, so, as, uh, was outlined, uh, this is a program that the city is already a member to, um, uh, back in January twenty-seven, twenty twenty. Um, and all we have done over the past year is done an update to the program, and, uh, had added community facilities district type of financing to it. Um, so, nothing changes in terms of the process, the participation, any liabilities, everything stays the same, uh, for the city. It's just adding this component, uh, to, to the program itself. Uh, there's a number of cities, um, of the hundred and twenty-three who are doing this right now and adding this component. The main reason, um, as outlined on this slide, is it allows the financing of different types of fees and a broader range of fees for developments. Um, in addition, we can do multiple local agencies, not just the city under this component, so it provides more flexibility. But ultimately, under the program, um, as with the previous version of this, uh, the city has complete discretion on whether to move forward or not move forward on a financing. It does not delegate any and all authority to CSCDA. The city has to sign off and agree to move forward on this. So, as mentioned, uh, the city, uh, is already a member to the program. This would just be a public hearing to update the program to include community facilities districts, um, and all the provisions, uh, would remain the same. Uh, the program benefits, uh, last slide, I will like go over here, is, uh, really the same as before. Uh, you can do financing as low as five hundred thousand to as high as thirty-five million. And the main component and the main key change is that it allows a broader range of fees, uh, to be financed under the program. Um, so with that, um, the last slide just outlined the cities, counties, and districts who are participants in the program, including your city itself already. Um, and then, the last slide here, uh, provides all the CFD financings that CSCDA has done, um, since we started in two thousand seven, this program, so about two hundred and seventy-six million, um, plus the number of financings, um, uh, over a hundred million that are currently going on right now. Um, so with that, I'm happy to answer any questions that, uh, the council may have.
Thank you so much for that presentation. Um, at this time, um, I am now asking my colleagues if they have any questions for Mr. Hamel. I see, uh, no comments, uh, from my colleagues, or no raised hands at this point. I think we have no questions for you, Mr. Hamel. You did a great presentation, so there's no questions. Um, at this time, uh, are, is there, I, I asked my colleagues if there's a motion on the floor. Entertain a motion on this item.
So, move?
Second.
Thank you very much. All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Ooh, actually, I think at this, at this point, um, we need to, this, this is a roll call vote. Um, and also, um, I have, will have to ask Stephen or Lynn Lonnie if there's anyone, um, on this item for public comment.
For those members of the public who wish to comment on item number eleven, please click the raise hand feature to speak on this agenda item. No raised hands, Mayor.
Thank you very much, uh, for, for madly reasons, um, uh, the motion to open the, uh, hearing and, uh, the motion to close from my colleagues.
Motion to close the public hearing?
Second.
Okay, and now, at this, uh, point, I think, uh, there was, uh, recommended action, um, by Vice Mayor, and a second by, uh, Councilmember Vida Ventura. And now, um, Ms. Intendencia, if we can have a roll call vote, please.
Mr. Buena Ventura?
Aye.
Dr. Dalz McBall?
Aye.
Ms. Di Giovanni?
Aye.
Mr. Sylvester?
Glenn Sylvester, aye.
Ms. Manalo?
Aye, thank you very much. Thank you very much, uh, to all the staff that worked on this item, um, and, uh, all the work. At this point, we will now move on to public appearances and oral communications.
In accordance with the Brown Act law governing regular meetings, the City Council is not authorized to speak to or take action on any other items in this meeting. Members of the public who wish to comment may click the raise hand feature to raise your hand to speak. For those joining by phone, press star nine to raise your hand and star six to unmute. It is important to note that staff will announce the name of the last person whose hand was raised upon calling for public comment, and that person will be the last verbal comment. If additional speakers queue up after the last called speaker, the mayor may continue to allow public comment if time allows. Otherwise, public comment may be emailed to cityclerk@dailycity.org to be added to the record and shared with the City Council. When you hear a name called, staff will send you a request to unmute your microphone, and you may begin speaking. Each person will receive a maximum of two minutes to speak and may only speak once. Once your two minutes have been reached, we ask that you wrap up your comments. Speakers on and compliance with the council's rules of decorum will be muted. We have one raised hand. Teresa Shipp.
Hello, Mayor, Vice Mayor, and Council, um, members. I really appreciate this moment. It's nice to see some familiar faces. Um, my husband, hi, no, hi. My husband and I have lived in Daly City for over twenty years. We give back to the community. We're positive community members. We feel passionately about Daly City. I have participated one time before in these meetings. Um, my husband and I lost our house to a fire about six years ago, and I did come here and, and I needed some help with the permitting process, um, and I appreciated the support that this council gave. Um, you opened today's meeting with talking about how welcoming Daly City is, and how much you really want all citizens and everybody to feel welcomed in Daly City. I'm here today to implore all of you for your leadership in this issue that is terrorizing my family, fireworks. I know everyone thinks, oh, you know, fireworks in Daly City, this is, this is what happens. I'm telling you every night when I'm putting my three-year-old to bed, she asks us, mommy, are the fireworks gonna wake me up again tonight? She screams. She's not had a solid night's sleep, except for when we left to go to a hotel because we knew it was so bad. I have called Daly City Police, uh, at least five times a night for the last six months. I understand. I don't, uh, you know, I'm not here to say, let's arrest everyone, anything like that. I'm here to say, as leaders, let's set up a program. Let's educate people about fireworks. Let's really talk about what's happening in our communities, the detriment it's causing to our citizens. People are leaving the city over this. Um, you know, today, just today, less than a block away from my house on Hanover and Roosevelt, a house caught fire. Let's educate our, our fellow neighbors about this, right? These people, I don't, you know, I don't know how it caught fire. I have no idea, but they've lost everything. They've, they've had a major tragedy. And, and let's build a community that respects each other and understands what we're doing to each other. But six months of my three-year-old waking up screaming, terrorized every night is unacceptable. Again, I, I'm not asking for police intervention, but I am asking for something to help. Something needs to happen here. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Thank you for your comments, Ms. Shipp. Mayor, I'm sorry.
Oh, I, I just wanted to, um, uh, actually, if, if I could just comment, I'm not gonna provide any direction or anything, but, um, I think what that last, uh, public speaker really raises a good point. Um, I mean, I, I, I found myself concerned as well, um, with, with, with the fireworks. Um, and I often wondered, you know, we, we have a law that says, uh, we, we're not supposed to have fireworks, uh, but, I, I mean, is it limited to July fourth, or is it, um, because I hear it going off, like the caller was describing, you know, days, sometimes weeks before the Fourth of July. Because I hear it going off, like the caller was describing, you know, days, sometimes weeks before the Fourth of July. And I, I think that the, the point is that ma- maybe we should think about, you know, regulating or monitoring this in a different way. Because it is dangerous and with the fires and, and especially the, the ones I'm hearing, I mean, I, I think there, there's those M eighties and they're scary and they're, they're, they're just not the ordinary firecrackers that I grew up on. But anyway, I, I'm just saying, I appreciate the, the, the comment and I, and I, and I share in that concern. Thank you, mayor.
Thank you, Councilmember Vida Ventura. Yes, I, I think there has been fireworks that have been occurring not only on Fourth of July. And we've sent out in our newsletters information in regards to fireworks. But if there is any suggestions from our community members, we'd love to hear them. As mentioned by Ms. Ship, and so, thank you for your comments this evening.
Mayor, we have one additional hand raised.
Okay.
Leanne Young?
Good evening, Daly City Councilmembers. This is Leanne. I live up in Southern Hills. And I just wanted to comment and ask about the northern part of Daly City and if the council has at the last time, at the last meeting, one of the last meetings I brought up the concern about top of the hill Daly City. And how that area needs attention, just as, you know, the rest of Daly City. In terms of the northern area, I just think there's a lot of that area that definitely needs more attention. So I appreciate if the council will look into that. Because again, the northern part of Daly City is, is just such a part of Daly City as central area of Daly City. So thank you for listening about that. And I just wanted to add that there is a concern about fireworks. Because we heard fireworks in our area as well. And we wouldn't want anybody's house to catch fire because of some illegal fireworks. The other thing, last thing I wanted to bring up was, I've been seeing a lot of developments in Daly City. And I'm a bit concerned about the development and what's going on. And wonder how we as Daly City residents can be more involved in the process. Rather than seeing something go up after the fact. I wasn't really aware of all these different things until I started, started seeing the construction going on.
Miss Young?
I'm wondering how we can
Miss Young?
Become more educated about it.
Leanne, your time has expired.
Okay.
Thank you so much for your comments. Mayor, that concludes public comment.
Thank you so much, Leanne, for your public comment. In, in lieu of providing input from the community, I'd like to announce that we have a special study session in regards to the Town Hall American Rescue Plan of twenty twenty-one. And also in regards to our Daly City Local Recovery Plan. This will be happening on Monday, July twenty-sixth, from six to seven P M. Through a virtual meeting via Zoom. The American Rescue Plan of twenty twenty-one provides pandemic relief funding to agencies for the following uses. Number one, general fund revenue losses due to the pandemic. Two, water, sewer or broadband infrastructure. Three, assistance to household, small businesses and nonprofits. Four, educational and youth services. At this meeting, the city council and staff will present information on the American Rescue Plan, review community priorities and welcome direct feedback from our residents and businesses to create a comprehensive local recovery plan. Hope to see you there on Monday, July twenty-sixth. Prior to moving to the other items on our agenda, I'd like to say thank you to some of, I think we have some young people that may have joined us at our meeting this evening. The San Mateo County API Caucus is holding an internship program with young people to learn more about government, governance and public service. So for those young people attending our council meeting, welcome. And thank you for taking the step in learning more on government, public service and being able to be a more civically engaged. At this point, I will now move on to appointments. Appointments in regards to Board Commissions Membership Committee Appointments. Seeing none? There's none? Okay, thank you very much. Now moving on to reports, the council committee reports. Any council committee reports, please?
Mayor, I have one.
Please, Vice Mayor, go ahead.
So Peninsula Clean Energy, where we are engaging the process of doing a whole review in terms of diversity, equity, inclusion and access. From its policies, the time practices, to the way we conduct work in Peninsula Clean Energy for PCE. So we conducted three interviews with three consulting firms last week, July eighth and July ninth. And we're gonna be close to choose, and I'm on that committee for hiring on that consultant firm. So we're close to making a decision. We'll probably come with a decision this week. And it's gonna be a six-months process where the, where this consultant will review all the practices, policies and how we can be, become more of a diverse equity, accessible and inclusive governing body when it comes to PCE. And that's my report. Thank you, mayor.
Thank you, uh, thank you, Vice Mayor, on that co- committee report and all your work that you're, you're doing with Peninsula Clean Energy. Any other committee reports, please?
Madam Mayor, is this twelve A or is it your subcommittee first?
This is a council committee, any council committee.
Okay, so on twelve A, I attended our CCAG meeting and probably the biggest highlight was that Sandy Wong, who has been instrumental in as the executive director for many, many years. She has now retired sadly, but we have now appointed a new person who will be finally approved, Sean, so that we can make the transition. So that's our city-county of association of government. And then I'll have a final report at our next meeting. So thank you very much. Thank you, mayor.
Thank you, Councilmember Di Giovanni. Are there any other reports?
Madam Mayor, I have one.
Councilmember Vida Ventura?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. So the Social Justice Committee met on the issue of restorative, or restorative justice program. I think it was a couple of weeks ago. We had a very good meeting and again, it was really at the initial stages of the kind of program we are seeking to develop. Some of the things that we talked about included, again, discussion on the categories of offenses that we, we think might be incorporated into this program. I think we definitely settled on the very low level misdemeanor type offenses like shoplifting, vandalism, trespass, things of that sort. We also talked to, or talked about the, what this the, the, the people, the, 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 the different roles, the people will be participating in. One of the, I think the, one of the, the key central takeaways we talked about was the idea of a well-qualified commission of people who will have to go through a very intensive, thorough process to get appointed on this commission. And it's something that the staff is considering developing a a protocol, if you will, regarding what kind of requirements, because we really want top people who are the right kind of people to put on this commission. Who will be well-vetted so that it really has some legitimacy, some credibility. And, and the, the community will look and, and, and have some belief and hope in. And then we talked about some of the roles that the district attorney may or may not have. The roles of the, that the city attorney is, is gonna be probably engaged in a little bit more. And then the process of trying to figure out where we're gonna get these cases from. And that they're gonna be Daly City cases. We also talked about, so the, the county of San Mateo through the courts is doing a, what they call a a diversion, misdemeanor diversion program. And what is different about what the county is doing, first of all, the county hasn't done it yet. Meaning that there was a new law that passed, I believe it was January of this year, that the legislator, legislature has mandated that the, the counties create their own misdemeanor diversion program. And so that's in the process. Some counties have done it already. San Mateo has not, although they are in development of it. Now, the reason I'm bringing this up is because there's a difference between what the county is doing versus what we foresee Daly City would be doing differently. And let me just, I'm not gonna take much more time, but because this is just F Y I information. So in the county, in, in the courts, that is, what happens is, in typical diversion programs, the defendant usually agrees to do the program and then completes a class or something, or like a counseling session, and then their case is dismissed. So it sounds good, right? I mean, it sounds good in that it's a way to divert, that's what, that's why they call it diversion. It's a way to divert people out of the system. First-time offenders, low-level misdemeanors, that kind of thing. So that sounds all great. The problem is, that's not really restorative justice. So because in that situation that the courts have, it's really just the defendant and the court. The victim is not involved. And that's why our restorative justice program is much different, because the victim is gonna be involved. And it's a way to provide them, meaning the victim, with some justice. To restore justice in a more meaningful way by interaction with the offender. With imposition of a punishment and with real say-so from the victim on what that punishment would look like. And hearing from the defendant with respect to, hopefully, he gains or she gains some insight into his wrongdoing. And that equals restorative justice. So I'm just bringing that up because that's what we're trying to do. We're trying to do something different. We're trying to get everybody involved. And, and we're trying to do it a way that, that complements the people of Daly City. And Daly City is gonna be key to forming this restorative justice program. So we also talked about, you know, some of the timetables. And one of the things that's gonna come up is we're gonna do a study session. And in that study session, we're gonna get input from everybody on the council and also from obviously the community. Because we want this to be a, a community-driven, community-formed, community-accepted kind of program. So I think it's very promising. It's still very much in the early stages because the staff has this real motivation to do this right and not just rush it. And so I'm very confident we're gonna deliver on something that, that will be very credible and hopefully the community will benefit. So, thank you, Madam Mayor. That's my report.
Thank you, Councilmember Vida Ventura on that and all the staff's work on this. I know, you know, in, in order to implement and create, create systems change, you know, it's one step at a time. And it's, it's, it's great to hear that there's, you know, continued support and, and seeing a very important program for our community in that respect. So thank you very much. I do want to share something in regards to our water use. So in light of the governor's announcement last week and the continuing drought conditions, you know, there is something that I wanna share in regards to a, a statement from Bosca. So the Bay Area Water Supply and Conservation Agency, Bosca, and the one point eight million residents, forty thousand businesses and hundreds of communities in Alameda, San Mateo and Santa Clara counties, it represents are confronted with two very serious water supply policy issues. The first and most pressing issue is an immediate voluntary statewide water use reduction of fifteen percent requested by Governor Newsom on July eighth to protect water reserves given the severe drought conditions throughout the state through aggressive conservation strategies and policies already in use. But which may be broadened and intensified promptly by Bosca agencies and their water customers. And then second is about the issues for water use in counties and guaranteeing long-term water supply source and providing critically needed benefits for the fish and the environment in the Tullamiamin River, which is a primary water source for Bosca's constituents. The Tullamiamin River voluntary agreement was developed by Modesto Interlock Irrigation Districts and the San Francisco Public Utilities Commission to provide important environmental benefits and reasonable protection for water supply for Bosca's agency and their customers. And so in regards to water conservation, you know, I've said this in the past that, you know, Daly City and its constituents does really well in conserving water. But we now know what, what lies ahead of us in regards to a drought. And so just continued conservation and wanna thank everyone for working. And so just continued conservation and wanna thank everyone for working to do so together. Okay, thank you very much. And now, I I see Councilmember, Councilmember Sylvester?
Uh, yes, uh, let me see. I want to just make sure I got, okay, yeah, yeah. The thank you, Mayor. I just wanted, I do have a few committees that I want to report on, but since we began hearing from some of our subcommittees, I just wanted to make a comment, if I may. I'll start off with the Restorative Justice Committee. First of all, I'd like to thank the committee for the forward progress and the work that has been done thus far. And obviously, I did hear that a study session will come about to refine it. I just wanted to put out some concerns ahead of time so this can give the committee something to think about. I appreciate the difference between the misdemeanor diversion penal code section 1,001.95, which was just enacted this year, and I appreciate educating the public that this is something a little bit different. But it's not the means to establish some sort of program. Basically, it starts off by saying California recently passed a new law that could allow the court to divert. It doesn't say anything about mandatory. And further on, what would be required is for a judge to grant diversion if diversion is going to be called into place. And of course, there's some certain conditions. The judge may decide not to. And it could consist of different items, but the victim is not present, which is different than restorative justice. And those items are undergoing treatment, community service, educational courses, attend self-help, submit to drug alcohol testing, pay restitution, and almost anything else the judge believes should occur. So I just wanted to make that point clear in the differences. I have read the staff report on this committee and I do have some questions. And I'll try to make this brief so that as the committee meets later on in the future that they seriously consider some of these items that I have concern with. We'll start off with Phase One Program, which is under Two. Number A, Restorative Justice Committee Survey to be developed and conducted by an outside consultant ASAP. I would like to ensure that council is made aware of the questions that's being asked of the constituents, which may require full and complete transparency. I just hate for a survey to be skewed and subsequently bad data in, bad data out. So I I I would hope that council would be, take a part in that. Subsection B, review results of survey. And that's to be done by the staff and subcommittee. I think a program such as important as this needs to be reviewed by the entire council, the results of which, which the all ad hoc committees submit their final results to the entire council prior to the vote or moving forward. The next is paragraph three, which is under Phase Two, which consists of definition and scope, staffing structure, administrative program costs, creation of a new board, and program evaluations. My concern here, I think we were putting the cart before the horse. I would like to see the compensation structure either for the board, whether we're going to have it on-call judge, but basically, what is the compensation structure for this program? The background process, who selects the new board? And what kind of input would the council have on that? Then there's the program evaluation. Who is going to do that valuation? Who is going to make the assessment? Will it be the victims? Will it be the suspects? And for those of you who don't know, and you know, I I see here that part of it is going to be lower-level misdemeanor crimes. I know for other types of crimes, we have what's known as a victim of violent crime. And there is a compensation fund. I'm wondering what would be the compensation for victims of these misdemeanor crimes? If any, has that been considered? And then I have the note here, stipends. Will stipends be applicable and what happens? And my last concern on this matter is liability for Daily City. And that is, in cases of recidivism, and what happens there? Are we protected? So hopefully, as we move forward, I can get some of those questions answered. I could continue on with the extra phases, but I think that these are the most important aspects I wanted to bring about at this time. So I thank you so much. I do have three committee reports that I wanna report on, so I'll stop at this moment. Pending the mayor as to how you want to proceed in obtaining the other reports. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Sylvester. A- as you can see from the comprehensive and very detailed a report in regards to the committee, it's really to provide everyone that transparency. And so we are still in council committees, and so if you'd like to report on your council committees, you can please proceed.
Thank you, Mayor. The first one is North County Fire Authority. I met with Mayor Manalo on that committee and it was quite productive. We passed the budget, which really has not changed much from the last time around. And I'd like to congratulate Mayor Manalo, who has now been voted in as the Chair of the North County Fire Authority. Mayor Manalo and I also met with the Jefferson Union High School District Committee in regards to 699 Saramonte Boulevard. As you all well know, that there is a lot going on there to include teacher housing, which is one of the first programs in San Mateo alongside of San Mateo College. I had a couple of concerns. One was the Head Start program that's currently a tenant, excuse me, at the, at the school. And also the community garden, to which there was some concern. And it has been our mantra for any new development, for open space. And we were assured to a degree, number one, Head Start will still have a place there at the new location. And that the community garden, there's works in the process to perhaps relocate. And at least the garden would still be there. So unless I miss anything, Mayor, please let us know. And the last committee is escaping me right now. Let me see, Jefferson? Well, I'll I'll let you chime in, Mayor. I know there was one, oh, oh. No, I can't remember. But if you bring it up, Mayor, I'll be glad to comment. And that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Sylvester. In regards to your reports, I will say also congratulations on being the Vice Chair for the North County Fire Authority. Also, in regards to the development with the Jefferson Union High School District, I think, you know, one aspect of it is also in regards to the affordable housing component of the project, given that it's about twenty-two acres of land and, of course, the Jefferson Union High School District's goal of being able to really kind of create a thriving district, you know, around our policy goals here in Daily City and ensuring that we have the most affordable housing units for our community members is also important. You know, it's a mixed-use development. Majority is residential with some, I would say, ground-floor retail that's being proposed. But the aspect of making sure that community uses such as the Head Start that has been there for quite some time and really, we know that the affordability of childcare is so important. And we see that that needs to continue. And so I'm glad that there has been really some movement to have them have a long-term longevity within that site and in our community. And then I think, you know, there'll be further discussion in regards to the affordable housing component of the project as a whole in our Affordable Housing Committee down the pipeline. Thank you. Any other council committee meetings or reports? Is that your, is your hand still up? Councilmember Di Giovanni?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. Appreciate that. Thank you. First, I wanna thank everybody for their hard work on everything. I'm gonna go back to the Restorative Justice on the Subcommittee. I just wanna first remind the public that our our May twenty-fourth meeting is when we had our Measure Q funds. And that the reason I objected to the funding of five hundred thousand dollars then for this, it had just been a line item at that time, and we were told it was not defined. There was no report at that time on May twenty-fourth. And the Measure Q, in none of that language, did the people vote for a restorative justice program? So I wanna make, remind people that background and also remind them that five hundred thousand to probably up to a million dollars is being asked. And it actually has been noted already and voted on for moving this without the people's vote. So with that, I want to go into a few questions that the Subcommittee, I find it interesting that after the vote of the money, now we finally get a report. So that's, you know, that's, while I appreciate some of it, it would have been nice to have some of that at that time. But I see all these different phases. I'm not sure how many times you met, but I would like to ask on reading some of this, to to please keep in mind, and I will be sending my questions. I don't know if my fellow council members will be doing the same to the city manager so that it can be presented to the Subcommittee and you can come back with the answers. That would be greatly appreciated. One of them is, you said it's going to be Daily City residents. Would you provide the data of the, of these low-level misdemeanors that only Daily City residents? Then what is the data on that? How many? Has it been ten Daily City residents a year? Four residents a year? How many that will make up for this five hundred thousand dollars that being asked for from our Measure Q funds? And since ninety-eight percent of our crimes are committed from people not in Daily City, I see that number is relatively low, but it would be nice to have a number from the Subcommittee and research in that. Also with that, I would like to, with the Subcommittee, to look further into, I don't know if any of you have been victims of crime. So with that, I understand that there is both sides to things. But as people that I know, including having had a gun in my face, I wanted to let you know and some other things, that victims' rights need to be included. San Mateo County currently has a program that is free to all victims. And in that is just restated, not just restitution, but they have counseling and things of that effect. So I would like for, to look into that. Are we taking on that as well? How much funding is going to, it gonna cost for having a fund of that manner for the victims themselves and the crimes? Okay, and please define petty crimes as we move forward. That would be a big help. Does it include DUIs, first-defense DUIs? I know you said shoplifting and things of that nature, but please define that, define that further. Also, speaking of liability, I'm also concerned about the safety of the staff in our city while they work day-to-day. That is a big, big concern of mine, because I'm on the third floor currently. And while I say safe in this building, that things may change if this comes into play. While bringing other people from the outside in, and it's a little bit different. It's gonna become a little bit different and a little bit for our staff members. What are we gonna do? Are we gonna have metal detectors at the front door now? And if so, what are we gonna install? Because these days, as we all know, COVID has really stressed a lot of people out. And even if they go from a little shoplifting or what have you, it can move quickly. Things can move quickly. And also on the commission with the qualifications, that really needs to be defined. And what are you saying as far as our, I think I understood from the Subcommittee and I believe at the last time, Councilmember Bonaventure or someone, that our police department would not be involved. Who makes that decision on what is turned over upon arrest for any of these petty crimes? And what goes from there? So I want people to consider that. And we are a municipality. To remind people, we are not a city court per se. And again, I am not against restorative justice in the manner that when people try to define it, and it's hard for laypeople or anyone to understand it. I want people to know transparency and that even as a council member, Ray Bonaventure, respectfully, has a criminal defense background, he's a criminal defense attorney. And I know in no way want anyone, or I'm accusing anyone, but please take that consideration. We cannot use our professions in manners to take things for our city and move them forward. That's very, very important for transparency and for people's in their life. This is not a place for our professional roles and and what we do in a day-to-day profession. Also, let's see, I wanna also remind that the voters did not vote for this in none of the languages and anything that was sent out. And still as of today, haven't received the current documentation on whether that these are even legal for the Measure Q to match at the funding and take these things seriously. And please, I understand, again, the the other end, but also do not leave out some of these victims that I haven't heard anything about. So and the liability is huge, and I really wanna know more details on the liability. And for now, I will reserve my other questions and look forward to the answers after the, your Subcommittee Restorative Justice meets again. And perhaps because it is a term that we can really explain things more to the public. And because I think it gets thrown out, just like a lot of words. And to have it defined more would be very helpful in that matter. And remember, we are bringing people in here and changing the structure of our city. And with that, it affects our staff who did not recommend this, who are stretched thin, and now we're gonna ask the city attorney for their office for more. I think that we need to keep those things. I think that we need to keep those things in mind. And um, already, they have been meeting with the subcommittee. And taken that time, but please consider, and probably you have. That these, it's a full-service city that we're trying to get better, better after COVID. This is, we're still in COVID. So, we are trying to meet the mental health challenges of our families and our youth at this time. And we're not able to meet those, um, currently, people are on waiting lists. So, remember our focus and uh, and respecting um others, especially victims as well. So, thank you, and, and I'll be sending my questions um, on that role. Uh, currently, and look forward to the um, answers at the next time. Thank you very much, Madam Mayor. And thank the uh, city manager as well for making sure we um, we received some sort of uh layout. Thank you very much. Thank you, Mayor.
So for so, for some clarity and viewpoint for those of you that are watching. You know, uh, five hundred thousand is about half percent of our a hundred million dollar general fund. Um, and um, in the previous budget vote, there was actually um, a majority. Three out of five council members that voted for the next year's total uh budget. So that's just for clarity perspective, um, and I think that it's very important to be, also be able to see. The totality of being able to move um, programs, budgets. Um, business forward and to have um, a, a, a perspective of the city as a whole. Um, and so I just wanted to uh reiterate that, uh, for those of you that are watching. Um, uh, and, and, and it's in lieu with what council member D Giovanni mentioned, and she did not vote for. The total budget for a next fiscal year. So just wanted to clarify that with all of you.
And to clarify that as well, is because of the funds were being asked of the Measure Q funds. That no one voted for on the ballot, that is why, that was my no vote. Thank you very much. I'll take it off the table. Thank you.
Thank you very much, and so that is a total of a, a half percent of our total hundred um, million dollar budget. So moving on to, are, are there any other committee members? Um, or council member, council that would like to speak on any other uh, c- council committee meetings um, previously? Seeing, seeing none, I, I do want to um, be able to uh invite the public. Um, this coming uh Saturday, uh, for those of you that are available. We will be having our um, event at uh, Geller Park. For the renovations, um, so we'll have a ribbon-cutting and grand reopening. Um, it will, doors open at ten thirty. You know, it's really been a while for all of us to get together. Um, because of the pandemic, and on a positive note, you know, let's get together and really celebrate. The new playground, the restrooms, you know, the field and court lighting, the renovated barbecue shelter. Um, updated basketball and tennis courts, um, you know, really through the partnership. Of the county of San Mateo through Measure K funds, uh, with Supervisor David Canepa's office. And also through our City of Daly City Capital Improvement Program funding, uh, which uh, myself and my colleagues approved. You know, uh, growing up in Daly City, you know, Geller Park has been a staple for so many. Um, going to the library there, a lot of people, you know, having a, uh, you know, recreation programs. Um, going to dances in the halls, and so being able to see, you know, you know, such a. Important park in our community, uh, get renovated is something that we should all celebrate together. Um, there will be free barbecue lunch, um, also, um, DJ Shortcut. He is a world-renowned DJ, homegrown and in Da- in Daly City. Um, but really is known all over the world and will be gracing us with a set. Um, and there'll be resource tables and also uh, learning more about our recreation programs, including. Our rec and public uh, library programs. Um, but it's really also an opportunity to get together and celebrate um, our renovated Geller Park. Um, there will also be an opportunity to get your vaccine um, onsite, no appointment necessary. I'd like to really thank um, the staff, uh, Leilani for um, helping put this together. Of course, Shauna and Steven, um, and you know, it's really a time for us to uh, be together. So tell everyone that registration um, is until Friday at five P M. We hope to see each and every one of you there. Um, also wanna acknowledge uh, Director Chu and his staff. Uh, for being able to um, really um oversee and, 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 and ensure that the renovations are done here at Geller Park. Thank you.
Mayor, I also have some council, um, city council reports.
Please, uh, Vice Mayor.
Thank you, Mayor. So I wanna congratulate uh, Westlake School Performing Arts Junior Group. Um, performance for capturing the National Critical Choice. Um, award at the annual National New York City Dance Alliance Competition. That is usually in New York City, but was in Phoenix last week for the performance of Prague Waltz. And so when we talk about performing arts and culture, um, Westlake School of Performing Arts is one of the crowning jewels. That is shining through throughout the nation and there, um. And also on top of that, um, I also wanna shout them, shout out to them too, they invited. They decel- they celebrated their um, thirty-year anniversary la- yesterday, uh, July eleventh. At Century Theater in Tenth Ram, where it was like, it was, it was pretty, it was like a thirty-minute documentary. About the beginnings of the school, and then they had a. Video-produced uh performances by, on the different programs that, that, that WSPA provides, so. Um, congratulations to all the students, the teachers, families and parents that back up and support. Um, the youth in terms of becoming great performers and, you know, becoming an artist is such a huge. Um, thing in terms of like the stage, because the stage represents power and the stage represents a platform for them to. Uh, for youth to understand who they are and understand who their body is and how their body can be instruments of expression. Um, so shout outs to Westlake School for Performing Arts. Thank you.
Thank you, Vice Mayor, um, for that uh, report, and congratulations to Westlake School of Performing Arts. Council member D Giovanni.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. Congratulations, uh, Dr. Rod, to, to all of them. Your daughter's pretty amazing. And, well, she's the one of that, that I saw. But anyway, thank you, Madam Mayor. I wanted to say that I know that, um, maybe also chime in, the great celebration of Restoring Engine Ninety-Five. And that was like, probably the top of the top, that was the Measure Q money, that, that's what the voters voted for, and that's what they got. Because we were, um, we're there, and I know Dr. Rod was in um, Arizona with his family. But uh, the rest of the council was there and, and uh, celebrating city manager, Leilani. Um, and it was quite a great celebration to see that, all the firefighters and now the engine. Uh, so the people know is, it's, it came true, it came back. And uh, that intention will stay there. So I just wanted to say that was a great celebration. And uh, to see that engine restored and telling the people, uh, and following through on our promises. On the Measure Q funds that have some sales tax, um, that was the first step. Um, to see it, um, to come to fruition. So fantastic, it's been five years. And I'm ecstatic for the city and the safety of our people and our community and for our firefighters. Um, so, um, they were on the corners during COVID, uh, the community was out there and thanking the community. They're the ones who voted. Thank you so much, and thank you, Madam Mayor, and I yield back to you. Thank you.
Thank you, Council Member D Giovanni. Um, are there any other comments from my colleagues before I move on to? The next item on our agenda. Seeing no hands raised, I, 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 I will say that, you know, for many on the council. Engine Ninety-Five has, has been a top priority, and I think it's every single person on the council. And restoring Engine Ninety-Five, and so it was definitely a celebration of all the hard work. I wanna thank um, city manager Malby, Malby and her staff, um, in uh, being able to support this endeavor. And then also, um, you know, our firefighters who never ceased um, to push this through. And our community members who definitely, um, um, who definitely um, showed up, um, and. So it was a wonderful celebration in person, um, and it was uh, something that. Um, you know, community members uh, should be happy and a- about because, you know, it, Engine Ninety-Five is here. And so, I think the staff was able to, um, for those of you that weren't able to attend. It's located, um, is it on our Facebook page, Stephen? Or early money, is it located so people can uh, watch it um, via, via Facebook?
Yes, it is on our Facebook and YouTube as well.
Okay, wonderful, thank you so much. Okay, uh, now moving on to staff reports.
Thank you, Mayor, uh, Madam Mayor and Council. Uh, nothing to report, just excited to uh, see everyone at Geller Park on Saturday. And get some food and some good vibes, even if we have that lovely Daly City weather like today. There'll be some giveaways, and so, um, looking forward to it, but uh, thank you.
Thank you so much, um, Shauna and all your staff for all the hard work that you all have done. And yes, it is going to be a great uh, celebration, even though we have our Daly City summer weather. We, we, we can just um, keep warm by dancing the good music. Um, so thank you for all your hard work. So at this time, um, we will move into um, adjourning tonight's council meeting. Um, in memoriam of the fall, and uh, the memory of the following, and uh. First, uh, council member Sylvester.
Uh, thank you, Mayor. Um, did we skip a, a, a item which was a city council? I know we did the committees.
Uh, no, we were, we were on city council when I had talked about um, the Geller Park.
Yes.
So we were on, we were on that item, so do, do you wanna revert back to city council?
Yes, uh, Mayor, uh, I, I just wanted to make a couple of comments and requests. And out of the uh, respect for uh, protocol on the council meeting, like uh, when something comes up. That we are not to take in the action, and I respect that, but I just wanna put a couple of comments or in a couple of areas out there. For everyone, uh, whether we will move forward or maybe will be agendized in, in a later council meeting. So I appreciate that. Uh, let's first start off on, uh, as you can see from the minutes. I had inquired about protocols within the uh, building and planning regarding pipes. Uh, the, uh, the changing over of the archaic building code on having to use metal. Instead of P B C or P C B pipes. Uh, I had a question on A D U heights and limits. Uh, how do we regulate how tall if someone wants to put an A D U in their backyard? And uh, I see in the code that uh, there's no height limit. So if you have a two-story building and they wanna put a four-story A D U, I have some concern about that. And then also the permitting process as to what's allowed prior to the actual issuance of a permit. So that's uh, the first item, thank you. And listening earlier. Uh, and, and, and this really brought it home to me regarding fireworks in our city. And I wanted to comment earlier, but I thought I'd wait at this time to provide my comments on fireworks. To be truthful, it has gotten worse. And we as a city need to uh, take this to heart and consider our residents. The little kids, the animals, and there are so many folks that are affected by fireworks. In my area, I still hear fireworks even uh, yesterday, and uh. We have put it out there that it is illegal in Daly City. And these are not your safe and sane fireworks. These are fireworks to consist of uh, uh, you know, M eighties and greater. People will shoot their guns, and believe me, uh, uh, if they're caught. Uh, uh, th- this would not qualify for any sort of uh, restitution as far as I'm concerned. Because when you shoot a gun, what goes up must come down. And uh, somebody can be hurt by this. So I think moving forward, and, and you know, the police department, I commend them. Because if I were in their shoes and I get a call from someone. By the time I get there, it's hard to identify who it was. Or they would run away, the police would leave, and they go right back at it. So it's very difficult. So here are my suggestions. Number one, we need to educate our. Constituents here in Daly City of the unlawfulness. When folks complain of an ordinance. And it doesn't have enough, then we need to change the ordinance. I would move forward for a stiffer fine if you're caught setting off an explosive. I didn't say fireworks, I said explosive. I would consider augmenting help for our police department, like they do in Oakland, maybe the use of drones. I know there's a system called ShotSpotter, to which if somebody fires a weapon, it can help narrow down. The particular area that it's coming from. So I say this, and I say this to the community. We must all work together, come together, and in the famous words of uh, they use at Bart Police. Say, see something, say something. And uh, I, I, and uh, let's reduce uh, this issue in the years to come. But it would only come by if we all work together. So uh, that's the comment I have, uh, those, uh, in those two areas. So I thank you, Mayor, and unless there are any other comments, I'm ready to move on to adjournment. Thank you.
I just wanna make sure there's no other comments for city council reports, that's item thirteen. If there are none, um, I, you know, I think something that needs to be uh, also stated is that. Um. There has been uh, input um, on uh, from our community members. Uh, on changing some of our municipal code sections. And so I think that, um, you know, it's extremely important for us to see what we can do. Um, as far as um, technology, um. You know, that, that we need to be able to see where it's coming from, um, I think. This isn't something only during Fourth of July, I think we hear it pretty, pretty, pretty often, and um. I think that in order for us to uh, get ahead of this, it's really, um. You know, I, I think of looking towards um, potentially um, creating a task force on this. Um, I know there's issues in the past when we've had, uh, you know, Airbnb issues. And you know, it happened in different commu- And you know, it happened in different communities in in Daly City. And that was something where we had brought forth, community members together. Um, I think this is something potentially down the pipeline. Uh, I would look into creating a a task force um in regards to this. Um, and so uh in regards to a task force in regards to illegal fireworks. Okay, thank you very much. Um, so um I'll. Well, now, um, at this uh juncture, we are past item thirteen. Um, at past item fourteen and um now um we'll move into the adjournment. Of today's council meeting in memory of the following and uh council member Sylvester.
Uh, thank you, Mayor. Um, I would like to adjourn in memory of a friend of mine who I've not only worked with. But I attended high school uh with her, Sylvia David. She was born in nineteen fifty-three in Puerto Cortez, Honduras, Central America. She began her early education at Saint Imedius. School to which after her family migrated here in pursuit of education and the American dream. She later attended Aptos Junior High School and later went in to enroll at Balboa High School. In San Francisco, till upon nineteen seventy-one, she graduated. She transferred to San Francisco State and obtained a bachelor's art degree in sociology. Not only was she a great student, but she simultaneously worked a full time job at Woolworth's Department Store. After graduation, she decided that she wanted to do something more. And that is to protect and serve in her community. She joined the San Francisco Police Department in nineteen seventy-seven. Being the pioneer that she was, she was a member of the fourth class of women police officers. She unquestionably left her mark on S F P D. Her engagement and involvement soared during her tenure. She became a staple in the police and firefighters' track and field Olympics. While the S F P D dominated the relays, Sylvia dominated the one hundred and two hundred yard dash. She was a fine officer and athlete who won multiple gold and silver medals during the International Police Olympics. California Police Olympics and the World Police Games. She was known as the original Women Trailblazers Award to which she obtained. And numerous tributes of honor from the National Black Police Officers Association. She retired with thirty-five years of service and dedication. Even with her demanding career, she always made sure to keep family first. She gave birth to two children, one in nineteen eighty-eight and later on a son. And her kids emulated her and became fine athletes as well. She was a devout Catholic and she also served the Young Ladies Institute. At uh Knights of Peter Clever and the Ladies Auxiliary. She will be forever remembered as a loving mother, nana, sister, aunt, woman of faith, friend, and an avid Golden State Warriors fan. Sylvia was an excellent businesswoman and created a long lasting legacy for her children and grandchildren. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Councilmember Sylvester. Um, uh, Councilmember Buena Ventura.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I would like us to adjourn in memory of Luis C Lozano. Uh, Mr. Lozano um was the husband of Annabelle Guevara. Annabelle owns the Pampanga Cuisine in Daly City. She is um someone that uh both her and her husband have contributed greatly. Uh, to charitable events, donation drives, things like that for Daly City. Uh, she particularly was involved in our community feeds and I I saw her husband Luis. Um, actually deliver a lot of the items to our community feed. So they very much cared for um the city, their community. And so um, he sadly passed away. The um memorial service for him will be on July fourteenth at from four to nine at Cypress Lawn. In Colma, there'll be a vigil on Wednesday, July fourteenth at six P M. The mass and the funeral will be on July fifteenth at ten A M at Holy Angels and then the committal at Cypress Lawn. Reception will follow on July fifteen at one P M at H and L Peninsula Restaurant in South San Francisco. Thank you very much, Madam Mayor.
Thank you, Councilmember Buena Ventura, um, and condolences to the Lozano and Guevara uh family. Um, and echo the same sentiment around uh this family's uh giving to the community. Um, especially uh in the time of need around food insecurity and uh being able to support. Um, our Daly City community. Um, also, um, to in tonight's council meeting, um. Uh, Crystal Gosin, um, who uh was a founding uh member of P P R C. And also uh Yulalia Ganje, uh, which is uh. Perla Abaryantos's um sister in law. Um, may we all have a moment of silence in honor of all of them. Thank you very much. Um, everyone take care. Good night.